I thought that my talking might would get everybody's attention.
Attention.
Thank you, thank you. Good afternoon to everybody. This is the workshop of the New Bern Board of Aldermen specially called to discuss concerns of our citizens. And at this time, I'm going to have a short prayer and then we're going to do the pledge of allegiance. Join me in a prayer. Heavenly Father, we just ask that you be with us today as we do the business of our city to make sure that our citizens feel that they are being serviced by their elected officials and that we are communicating and that these things would be pleasing to thee as we continue to recover from Hurricane Florence. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Which join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, at this time, this being a workshop, I want to open this up a little bit different. The New Bern -- what?
If you don't mind, real quick, we have an interpreter from FEMA who is here. I'm curious if anybody in the audits has any hearing disabilities at this time. If not, we're going to ask the interpreter to face the camera in this angle so that whenever people speak, that this will be able to be translated across all of our different broadcast channels, you know, whenever someone's speaking.
Okay, I want to make a couple of opening remarks. We want to continue to provide information to the public and to communicate the concerns we have as a board, the things that we're hearing, the questions that are being asked. And so today, we have brought together quite a few experts that are in the courtroom here with us. And at this time, I'm going to go around and any Alderman, everybody has a little concern and they have some different comments they would like to make. I'm going to start with Alderman Bingo.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm really pleased to see a great group of our citizens here today. Thank you for joining us and we're here to work with you and not against you and we want to find solutions and common ways we can work to make this city the best it can be. To this end, we have scheduled this work session and I want to thank Nelson McDaniel for your leadership and reaching out to us and preparing the information that was given to us. Thank you so much, I really do appreciate that. And at this time, I would like to introduce someone from FEMA who's going to introduce the rest of the people that are here that will hopefully assist us. So Maria, would you come to the microphone, please? So this is Maria Figueroa and she's pretty awesome. She is the government liaison with a specialty in housing for FEMA and she's been very gracious. She met with Alderman Harris and myself a couple of weeks ago, so we got to know her a little bit and we really appreciate you being here today. So if you could introduce the rest of your team, that would be helpful.
Thank you and thank you for inviting me. My name is Maria Figueroa. I am with FEMA Intergovernmental Affairs. What I do is I provide information to the elected officials so that they can in turn share it with their constituents and serve better. And I have brought with me my subject matter experts in different areas. One of them is public assistance, which is assistance for infrastructure. Those are the two. We have National Flood Insurance Program representative here, too. We also have the voluntary agency liaisons. We have our SBA representative, our media relations person. And we are going to have an individual assistance specialist. It's a little bit late, but we also have our mitigation specialist. So feel free to ask any questions or we'll come and answer.
Thank you, Maria.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Alderman Harris.
Mayor, at this time, I don't have anything to say.
Okay. I want you to ask.
The only thing I have, Mr. Mayor, is that I'd like to introduce to also with us tonight is Mr. Simmons. He's the incident commander from Team Rubicon. If he's on the back, Mr. Simmons, would you stand, please?
Thank you.
Thank you. Team Rubicon is still in town, spoke with them today and they have still over 126 work orders on the books. So just wanted to recognize Mr. Simmons.
Okay, Alderman Bass.
No, I don't have anything said at this time, just more than to say thank you for all of our citizens that's come out to join in with this workshop so that you can get some additional information that maybe you may not already have. Thank you.
Alderman Alderman.
Nothing right now, sir.
Okay, we'd like to say before I turn this over to the staff that we will continue to work on the hurricane recovery. If we need additional workshops, if we need additional press conferences, we will have those. At this time, we're going to turn this over to City Manager Mark Stevens. Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. So I was planning to do a kind of an update, I guess, during our board meeting. I may still do that again if you would like for me to do so. That way we kind of have both of them, but wanted to go through it real quickly as to kind of where we are as far as our post hurricane disaster cleanup and all the other functions that the city is doing at this time. Currently, our Public Works Department, our residential and commercial trash, it's on schedule and being collected based on the normal schedule. Same thing with recycling, it's on schedule as well. To date, vegetative debris, as of yesterday at the end of closing business, we have removed 136,786 cubic yards of debris. That is just yard waste as in vegetative, trees, limbs, things like that. We estimate that we're approximately 90% complete at this point. One of the things that we are looking at right now and would like some input from the board on is an anticipated final pass date. Right now, we are looking at a final pass date of November the 5th as being the final date for people to put items that are related to the storm on the curb, being that we're 90% complete. We've been watching the graphs and the loads that have been coming in as well as cubic yardage and those are starting to decline. And generally, what you see is vegetative debris starts to have green leaves on it. That's not storm-related debris anymore. That's day-to-day debris. Now, I'm not saying that we won't pick up that debris because obviously we do that annually year-round. But with regards to our storm-related debris, our contractors can only collect storm-related debris, so therefore we do at some point have to have a cutoff date for the storm-related debris. So we're anticipating looking at November the 5th as that date. Obviously, that's up for discussion and would like to hear from the board on that. They would anticipate a final pass completion date of that cutoff date of November the 5th at approximately November the 15th. It will probably take them seven to 10 days to go as one more pass throughout the entire city.
Okay, Ken, I'll stop you there.
Sure.
Where would you like for us to give you direction on that now or?
However you wish to do so. Obviously, at some point or another, we will have citizens that will still bring stuff to the curb. We've got to be able to continue to do our normal operations on vegetative. It's not a big deal when it comes to construction.
The big deal would be the difference from when a contractor under, right now, it was just get it out of the way to get the roads passable and when we go to whatever that date is, it will go back to our normal procedures of if a resident physically puts it out there, we pick it up. If a resident hires somebody, the contractor's responsible. Is that what you're looking for?
That is correct, sir.
And what, at what time would FEMA reimbursement for pickup? Do we need to do the date of November 5th or would FEMA continue to provide reimbursement at a later date or?
FEMA reimburses on debris that is storm-related.
Okay, so you're thinking that November 5th is that date?
We have, we have made multiple passes throughout the city.
I made three.
I would say probably at least that in some, if not more, in some places that are more heavily damaged.
Does Board have questions, concerns, comments, direction?
I think if they went around and they did an assessment, I'd support that November 5th would be great for a cutoff so we can get back to.
I guess too, what I'd like to say too, if there's residents out there that feel that their street's been missed or we didn't, you know, there's something out there we might have missed, just call into Public Works and let them know and that will help get us to the November 5th.
As part of the closeout process, what happens is, is we have basically a debris management contractor and we have a, and we have a firm who oversees the work that's being performed by our debris management contractor, okay? What will happen is on that final closeout, when November the 5th happens, call it November the 6th, that contractor will begin their final passes. In doing so, our people who watch what they're doing will be following along and when they go down a street, they will close out that street. They will pick up everything on the street at that point and then they close it out and we mark it as complete because at that point, they need to know that we want to know too, that they have been to every single street on final pass because that's some of the questions that arise.
Just want to make sure we communicate that and let's, through our social media, whatever, that so people know the date's coming up.
And that's the reason why we want to get that date now so that we can give people another, at least two weeks or a week and a half, I guess, basically at this point, to get whatever they have left that storm-related debris items to the curb so it can be collected.
Is Board good with that?
Yes.
Okay. Is that good enough for you?
That's good.
Okay.
Okay. Construction debris. Through Monday, closed business yesterday, we have collected 6,845 tons. The collection of construction debris, we estimate to be approximately 90 to 95% complete at this point. Most of that at the help of a lot of our volunteers, Team Rubicon, other places who came in, Samaritan's Purse, a lot of them done the muck and gut on many of the homes here in our area. And I'm sorry, I don't want to leave anybody out, but anybody who contributed and even our local people who contributed in helping our citizens muck and gut their homes have been a tremendous asset. We also same anticipate the final pass to be the November the 5th date. Completion of that to take them seven to 10 days. We will continue, as long as the muck and gut related items are out there, continue to look at mutual aid assistance from cities of Greenville and Raleigh and Charlotte. We will have them remain until at least November the 16th to assist as needed. We've had multiple cities in here, those are the ones that are kind of remaining now. We've had Garner, Wilson, Rocky Mount, Hendersonville, Harrisburg, Salisbury, Rocky Mount. I mean, just there's been a tremendous amount of support from our sister cities. And if any of y'all see them at any of our events, legal municipality events or Metro mayors, please thank whomever their leadership is because that's been a tremendous asset to us. To date, the city of New Bern has received almost 7,140 hours of mutual aid from these folks. They send their trucks, they send their staff, those staff are away from their homes and their families to come down and assist us, so we definitely should, should thank them for, for those efforts.
And Mr. Stevens, while you're commenting on that, it's a good time to mention that any and all church groups, any volunteerism in New Bern, we're trying to get that figure together because it's, it's a good figure to have. I know that that comes toward future grants and things like that, the amount of volunteerism in our city. So if, if any group is doing volunteer work, we would like to know the number of hours. If you could just give that information, 636-4000, we would love to have that.
Yes, sir. And once again, once we've completed the final passes, we will commence our regular collection. Obviously, construction-related debris, especially new construction, is not eligible for reimbursement from FEMA. However, the muck and gut portion or damage or storm-related type damage stuff is eligible for collection and reimbursable through FEMA. But anything that's new, so let's say you tore out drywall, you tore out, you know, electrical components, whatever, all that stuff comes to the curb, that is eligible to be collected from FEMA. If you have a contractor that comes in and starts cutting up OSB boards and plywood and lumber and everything else to repair something, that is not considered collectible and eligible under FEMA. So anything afterward to the date of November the 15th, that your contractor would need to get their construction dumpster and utilize that just in the normal way that they would do any of their day-to-day operations from, from this point forward or any other time that we've had construction-related work done in the city. Damages to city property, obviously, we do still have some emergency repairs as far as our city street and infrastructure. Most of those have been completed, but there are some that are still out there that we've got to, to repair. Most of those have been protected by cones, so please adhere to the cones or barricades that are out there. Do not move them, do not go around them, whatever. Those are there for a reason. We're trying to protect the public, so just please be wary of those locations when you see them. Buildings, we had over 20 municipally-owned buildings receive some kind of damage during the hurricane. All of those damages have been submitted to our insurance and our adjusters have been on-site evaluating those damages. As soon as we have our insurance adjusters' recommendations or whatever they're planning to cover on those, then at that point, we can start completing our project worksheets because obviously that's a criteria that's necessary for, in the public assistance side, for us to have our insurance look at that and whatever we have to pay out as far as our deductible or part of our plan.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
Mr. Stevens. I've got one email concerning this, but I know because the trucks are so full and they're driving, there's a lot of trash around, especially one of our municipal buildings. Looks like from debris that might have blown or come out of bags, a lot of multiple kinds of trash around some of our buildings and even on the streets. Will that be something that our crews will get out there and try to pick up and clean or like at any of our buildings? Who would be responsible for the, you know, cleaning up of that surrounding our municipal buildings?
Sure, our municipally-owned buildings, obviously, you know, we will, we will get to that. It's kind of lower on the priority list, I guess, at this point, but obviously, we will try to restore our properties as best we can, clean them up as best we can whenever we have the availability to do so. But ultimately, right now, we're, we're still trying to get debris out of people's yards and everything else. And then obviously, some of our properties have been damaged such that, you know, we're waiting on the insurance adjustment and everything else.
Yes, my eyes would like to say maybe as if, because I've seen it firsthand, because I see Ms. Startsman out there, you know, as they were picking up the construction debris down the street, neighbors were out there sweeping behind them and picking it up because there's, you know, maybe glass or other trash that doesn't get all picked up and they wanted their street back and I don't blame them. But, you know, we want to encourage neighbors that we're trying to do the best we can, but if they get out there with a broom, maybe we should have videoed that, Ms. Startsman, so we can give a lesson. But, you know, it's helpful to us and it really gets those streets back to.
Just, just kind of, and I'm glad you kind of hit on that. Our contractor, based on their contract, is, is required to pick up items six inches or greater. There will be small, I mean, anybody that's dealt with drywall will see little bitty pebbles that come out part of the drywall that's the size of a piece of gravel or anything else. Obviously, where we can get assistance or help from our citizens in raking that stuff up into a pile and put it in a trash bag, put it in your trash, whatever it may be, we would, we would welcome that assistance because ultimately, right now, we're trying to get the big piles. The small piles will come later on in the process, but anywhere where our citizens help, we would greatly appreciate that.
Mr. City Manager, do we have a truck that comes through and does the sweep?
Yes, we do. And it's been, it's been operating already.
Okay.
Insurance in total, the city had approximately 290 claims for damages due to Hurricane Florence in various different locations throughout the city. So we've, you know, whether that be a street that has a storm water-related repair that was something from the storm, whether that's a roof on a building, whether that's here at City Hall, we had some water intrusion through the bricks. I mean, we've got numerous repairs, but we've, and Alderman Astor, you working in the project worksheet world in the past, know what 275 or 290 claims will be like. It's voluminous amounts of data and information that have to be submitted. So it's a great thing. We do have our consultant here who is working with us through our project worksheets and through our assessments of our city properties, so that will, that will assist us greatly. With regards to public utilities, water and sewer, all of those are operating and functioning like normal. We do have some emergency repairs that we're making whenever we see those or whenever those are necessary. And there are several of those that still exist in some sewer main areas. The water system has been, has been pretty strong all the way throughout the storm. Our electric system's back up to normal. Obviously, all of our electric customers who can be in service are in service at this time. Some people may have experienced some sporadic outages. I know down in the, towards the Havelock area, there's been some that's, that's occurred. Some of those because of limbs that may be in a tree that finally broke free and actually fell on a line and caused some outages. Some of it may be because we had some damage to the system or an old pole where we have to replace the pole because it was compromised. Please bear with us on some of these sporadic outages that we have. We will get you on as quickly as possible if those do occur, but they're, they are very few and far between, so if you'll just bear with us. As we had a, technically, I guess, two hurricanes come through and so we do have some, some damage to trees and things like that that are still out there that we're having to manage and mitigate now in our electric rideways. For those who do not have power yet, we basically have about 709 remaining that are, that basically failed a meter panel inspection that still need to be replaced. Oftentimes, those are related to works that need to be done within their own homes before a meter can be reinstalled and that's electric related. So there's about 709 of those remain in the system. Our Development Services Department has processed a little over 600 permits due to related storm damage. We're, over 90% of our permits that we have received have been closed out in less than 24 hours. If you have any questions, we urge you to call our inspections department at 639-2942 with regards to any kind of works at your home.
Could you repeat that number again, just slowly, so everybody hears it?
That's our inspections department. And obviously, our staff have been working with the State Historic Preservation Office regarding historic reconstruction related to works being performed on historic structures and any kind of elevation or mitigation type opportunities that might be out there and kind of working through those. And we've got some, some information that will be shared today as well as I continue through our presentation. We have about 15 homes right now that we are working with folks from FEMA on that are being evaluated for demolition due to the severity of the flooding impacts that we've seen. So our Development Services staff have been working with that regard with some of our federal support partners here. Parks and Recreation, I'm happy to say that all of our parks have reopened now, including Union Point Park and Lawson Creek Park, which were probably significantly damaged. Glen Burnie Park just recently opened as well. We had a lot of significant tree damage and limbs that still remain there, but that one has been reopened as well. Our boat launches at Union Point Park and Glen Burnie Park have reopened, but Lawson Creek will remain closed for the time being. One of them has a sailboat right in front of it and the dock is missing. Additionally, there was significant damage to the docks at our other boat ramp at Lawson Creek Park as well, so those will remain closed until further notice. We're now looking basically at remaining tree issues, hangers, leaners, stumps, down trees that we have in our parks and working through those as we can. Crews are also working at Stanley White Recreation Center. Obviously, it receives some very significant damage. The floor for the gymnasium's pretty much ruined, all the way down to the old tile that used to be underneath there. And then obviously, we've got to look and see what that tile is because that could potentially be something we've got to mitigate as well. But Stanley White obviously had some significant damage and our crews have been in there working. Our staff relocation, we have Parks and Rec admin staff at our Aquatic Center if you need to reach them. And Stanley White Recreation Center staff is combined with our West New Bern Recreation staff at this point and they're operating from there. In, speaking of West New Bern Recreation Center, we continue to operate the American Red Cross Shelter there. We started that shelter September the 28th for the American Red Cross. Obviously, you know how some of our own staff and their families during the storm, but September the 28th is when they commenced operation at the American Red Cross portion of it. The shelter opened with 170 citizens. I'm happy to say now that we're unhappy to stay. We still have 67 people that are still there. And I know that, I know that our folks from FEMA have been there, they have assisted in discussions with them, trying to look at opportunities to get them out of our shelters at this point. I know I've met with several individuals from FEMA today who are looking at various properties, one specifically so that they could potentially look at housing units to assist with those who may be displaced. And obviously, our fire and police, we've kind of returned back to our normal operations. We may still do an occasional well check. We had a fire the other day. We urge citizens just to be mindful and wary. It is starting to get cooler weather, people start building fires and things like that. Just please be safe in what you do. If you've had any damage to your home, you may want to check your chimneys, you may want to check those kinds of things, especially if you have a wood burning stove, that we, you try to protect your, your home from any kind of fires that may occur. Finally, obviously, you know our customer bills have been going out now that we have restored power. Our late penalties and delinquent fees continue to be waived at this point. New deposits will be waived until the 15th of November, so the 15th of November kind of stands as a pretty common day for, for our collection, end of collection, as well as the 15th for the end of any new deposit waiving of fees. And if you have any questions regarding your utility counter bill, please feel free to contact our utility business office. The number there is 252-639-2750 and they will be happy to answer any kind of questions. We do, did probably have some variations in our bill as far as our read dates that may have been affected by the storm or otherwise. And we are continuing to work with customers at the best that we can to try to help facilitate their needs during this, this recovery effort with our, with regards to their utility bills. That's kind of all I have as far as where we are right now with recovery stuff. I know that there was some questions that were submitted and I was going to kind of dive into those, but I'm going to open it up if y'all have any questions regarding what I.
I just want to explain to the citizens again where we're at. I think it, you know, I was contacted by Nelson McDaniel and a group of citizens that formed a group, Citizens Advocating Recovery and Education. I love that K R, I think it's a great, great acronym. And who had concerns and I'll just, if you don't mind, I'm going to read their opening statement and then we can go ahead. Says, "As New Bern and Craving County are well into the emergency relief process from Florence, the large questions of recovery and resiliency are before us. These questions are of a different order and magnitude and the way in which they are answered will provide the roadmap for several years. We are eager to support elected officials and staff who recognize the scope of this task and are willing to commit the resources necessary for its accomplishment, including the employment of expert advice and perhaps the additional staff required for success. In addition, we want to work with leaders who will work to build bridges across diverse areas and across different jurisdictions. We want to develop relationships and pathways for open communication, bringing communities together, not exacerbating divisions. There are places that have suffered such disasters and recovered successfully. We need to learn from these experiences." To that end, they've compiled a list of questions. The list is not definitive. Many more questions will follow and we believe that many more of these work sessions will follow as well. Much of their recovery will depend on the actions of individual citizens, yet they will need the positive informed leadership of public officials if they are to respond in ways that serve the interest of the individuals, but also the public at large. So again, Nelson and your group, thank you so much. I, I need to let everybody know that we've been talking back and forth and in the interest of time, we felt this is, had to be very timely. We didn't want to put it off another week or two that we just received this this morning, early this morning. So we have met with the city manager and he has reviewed some of these questions and we're going to do our very best to try to discuss what was asked of us. But with that being said, we still agree that there's much more we have to do, many more of these may have to take place. So this is not the end, this is the beginning. So we ask for everybody's patience as we work through this and we're going to, again, if it's all right with you, Mayor, turn this over. We, we thank you. We want citizens, we, all of us here have never experienced anything like this before. Well, maybe, I don't know. Alderman Astor, you've been in tsunamis and all that other stuff helping, but I, I think I can say none of us have really experienced anything like that, as you may not have experienced anything like that. And we're all learning and working together and that's the, the most important thing. I've told people near and far that this was an equal opportunity destroyer. Didn't care where you lived, how much money you did or didn't have, it destroyed. So in that sense, we, we are all here as a board of Aldermen working together to assist the citizens. So Mr. Stevens, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Alderman Bingo and Board. I will try to answer these questions the best I can. I didn't get it till this morning as far as the list of questions, but I did answer all of them and so I'm going to try to go through those real quick. I'll read the question and then I'll try to do my best to answer that. And if, keep in mind, you know, we, we aren't the be-all, end-all organization. There are multiple organizations, multiple federal, state, local governments that will be involved in this process as far as. be involved in this process as far as our road to recovery. And it's very important for us to remain patient, but yet continue to work through the system because it is a systemic process that we have to continue to go through. The first question that, and these are kind of lumped into categories. There was one regarding leadership. That's the first category. So I'm going to go there. Is there someone on the city and county staff or under contract focusing full time on recovery coordination with other organizations and levels of government and setting in motion long-term resiliency planning? So they jumped into a big one there from the very beginning on the questions. What I will say, and I'm going to break that down kind of into two parts. First off, regarding recovery, all of our departments in one way or another are still focused heavily on recovery and coordinating with any nonprofit, state, or federal organization that is needed to complete the task of recovery. This will obviously continue until we're fully recovered from Hurricane Florence. I want the public to know that we still have some items from Hurricane Irene in 2011 and Hurricane Matthew in 2016 that still exist. So it is a long-term process. Many of these will be addressed in the first year or two, but there will be lingering issues that will remain, that will take some time to take, to address. With regards to the resiliency planning portion of it, this is a planning item, obviously, that takes a significant amount of time to develop along with a very important part of that, which is the public's input. Anytime you're talking about resiliency planning, you're talking about things such as potentially raising the elevation, the base flood elevation plus freeboard. That could greatly impact home builders and their, the way they build homes, homeowners and the way they need to raise homes, or whatever they may be. So obviously, long-term resiliency of a community is certainly a priority of this board and staff. And I speak for y'all, but I know as far as staff, I think that we all are on the same page with that moving forward in our future policymaking decisions. But once again, I will say that these decisions will most likely occur after a great deal of study and planning is performed. I don't think you just shoot off the hip whenever you're talking about long-term resiliency planning because things can get very expensive, both from the public side, government side, but also from the individual private side. Because ultimately, whether a home builder builds a home that has two extra or three extra more feet of freeboard on it, will be passed along to the customer who buys that home. So obviously, these are some long-term issues that we've got to discuss and have our planning, our professionals in there, as well as look at, I think it's very important for us to do some study and research ourselves of communities who may have done this in the past and perform these resiliency studies. I know 60 Minutes did the study with the group from Hurricane Sandy up in New Jersey who have looked to start implementing project-based resiliency planning into their designs. So that's something that I think at this point, we probably would look at and if we behoove our interests to research those.
So can I stop you there?
Sure.
So with that being said, basically, we then would be wanting to maybe look at a consultant that would come in and do an assessment, you know, of what's happened, what we need, and trying to put together some strategic kind of plan? Is that what you're saying right now? I just want to make sure I totally understand.
Yes, and I think I kind of hit those on my next answers as I continue down the list here. But ultimately, I think that that's probably advisable at this point is having some professional group come in to do some, whether that is supported by the federal government through some kind of funds, whether that's supported through state regionally for some funds in eastern North Carolina, whether we have to hold the road ourselves and do it ourselves to have our own individual citywide resiliency planning. I think that's something that this board will have to tackle at some point in the future. Part B of the leadership question was who should the citizens look to for leadership from the city or county to drive a successful recovery? And just real quick, I can't comment on anything that the county does. I mean, the county is their own entity. I'm not sure that everyone kind of grasps the whole way that the government works in North Carolina, but the city is its own entity, the county is its own entity. Their board and their executive staff would have to make those decisions. So I'm speaking clearly on behalf of the city at this point and our staff, and then obviously, the board's decision will direct my methods and our actions as staff. But ultimately, the Board of Aldermen, along with the executive leadership of the city, would assist in this effort as far as recovery from the city's perspective. County commissioners and their executive leadership will also be involved with assistance in recovery from Hurricane Florence. I will say, when it came to Hurricane Irene, our history of it was that once the, if there is a mitigation or a buyout decision that's made by FEMA, generally, that decision comes down through the state to the counties. The county will contact us. We give them a list of properties we deem that might be eligible based on the amount of damages or whether they're in certain criteria that are met within the FEMA guidelines. We would submit that back to the county, and then that, obviously, at that point, FEMA begins their assessments of the mitigation and buyout plan. So that's kind of how a lot of this works. It's kind of a, works its way through the system. Part C, who should the citizens look to for leadership from the city or county to drive a successful strategic flood mitigation strategy? This kind of gets into a little bit more of future planning and consultant-type work. While we are still spending, as staff and our board, a very significant percentage of our time on the immediate post-disaster recovery, the city is already beginning to look into flood mitigation strategies. We're also looking at hiring a consultant who has expertise in the assessment of municipal disaster repairness and resiliency planning. And I think that's something that at some point or another, staff may be bringing to the board at your request to send out an RFQ to potentially look at that for our future here in New Bern. And there's some other questions. I will kind of hit on that. So I won't, I guess, blow out the candle already, as we'll get to singing the song here in a second. But what department slash person is working with outside entities, organizations who own planning for severe weather events in the future, i.e. flood mitigation strategies relevant to each community? And like I said, staff across many different departments of the city are currently collecting data and other pertinent information that would be critical to the development of these mitigation strategies. One thing that the city, when I came here, lacked was very good data management and data collection type information. Of course, technology helps a lot with that, but we have a tremendous amount of data. Some of the things that I've provided y'all here, which will be addressed in some of these questions furthermore, is maps of our city where our damage assessments will occur. Our guys have iPads out in the field collecting this data, putting damage assessments, preliminary damage assessments together. You'd be amazed at how accurate with these maps that the damaged areas actually fall pretty close in line with where the floodplains are. And those are produced by the Army Corps of Engineers and obviously, some other federal Flood mapping and things, I think we have a flood mitigation expert here as well. What person, let's see, I read that one, what department person. I think staff, like I said, across many departments of the city are currently collecting this data. And obviously, we're looking at potentially a consultant to help develop these strategies, and that's going to come, I provide some detail, but ultimately, that's going to come with us developing an RFQ of what we need, what we're looking for, and how we plan to be resilient, how we plan to be a better flood-prepared area, disaster-prepared area. And once again, I just want to kind of put things into perspective. I think this is probably the worst storm since I owned in 1955. Is that right, Mayor? I know I wasn't here, but anyways, 1955. And just to also put it in perspective, Hurricane Irene, we experienced storm surges of 7.5 feet roughly. This storm was 10.5 feet. So it was a much more severe storm and actually caused a much more significant amount of damages. So I guess to kind of sum that up, if, you know, if a property was flooded during Hurricane Irene, then it flooded this time. If there was a property that was kind of on the borderline of potentially flooding during Hurricane Irene, it flooded this time. And so what we've got to look at is, is where is that, where's that building factor? Where's that resiliency factor that we've got to look for in the future as far as mitigating these issues in the future? So, and that's part of where a consultant will help us moving forward.
Mr. Stevens, let me start to say, we're going to probably try to close this out at 5:30. We have quite a few experts that are going to need to talk. That's what the public's looking for. I think the number one question right this minute of what you're saying, and we'll bring it in, kind of, and tip to us a little bit, say that the average citizen I know wants to know when they walk in the door of Development Services, what the procedure is, who to see to expedite the remediation of their, of whatever their situation is. And I think you have short-term ideas about that as far as current staff, and then we're looking at some more permanent mitigating type procedures, you know, as we, you and I are going to DC in the next week. And again, Alderman Odom and you were up there a couple weeks ago. So, you know, we're working through this, and we don't have all the answers today, but we do want to get those experts up here in a minute. But if you could kind of, in a cursory mode, go through these, because then that would give maybe the citizens a couple minutes and ask any questions that might have been left out. The number one question I think of concern is walking in the door of Development Services, the process.
Okay. Well, let's start with that one. So you have a damaged home. That damaged home received flood issue, flood-related damage, storm-related damage, and you want to try to repair your home, okay? Well, to repair your home will greatly depend on how severe the flood is. All of these cases are an individual case-by-case basis. I want everyone to understand that. Even those in the historic district will be a case-by-case damage-related type, storm-related damage issue, they're case-by-case basis. So generally speaking, you have a damaged home, you come over to our Development Services Department wanting to repair your home. Obviously, you've been without power, you're permanent, you've got to work through the process of getting a inspection, whether that be for electric, whether that be for other activities, whatever that may be, after you've selected a contractor. Or maybe they're going to do it themselves. And that's what I'm saying, Mayor, it's case-by-case based. It's very difficult. So I would advise each and every one to reach out to our Development Services Department and speak with someone. Inspector, I think Mr. Boswell, our chief building inspector is here today. You'll stand up so everybody can see you there, Matt. Matt's our chief building inspector. He has a staff that works through these types of questions and these issues each and every day. So we advise everyone to reach out to them, and that's the most important thing. Obviously, there's significant things that go on too with regards to whether a person wants to raise their home, whether they want, you know, to look at those things. To my knowledge, and FEMA folks, please correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not sure that a decision has been made yet that I've heard of on mitigation as far as elevations or demolitions or buyouts. Is that correct?
Do you have a mitigation person want to come up and...
Yeah, come on up and ask that question.
Marie, your people might want to come up closer to the front, so as we call on them, they can jump up and maybe address things.
Marie, first question to answer is, is make the public aware of how many different, I wouldn't call them divisions, but different parts of FEMA. You have recovery, you have mitigation, you know, as far as elevation, that's a different number, that's a different department. So if you could just kind of update the public a little bit on that, which area?
Well, actually, actually, my role in mitigation is with public assistance for a six, which would be different from individual assistance. But there are similarities. But yes, elevating houses is, or a building is one of the options. We basically have wet floodproofing or dry floodproofing, so that's taking it up out of the water. And so that would be dry floodproofing. The other thing is to, where you, and actually, even with that, the lower floor can still be used and the water flows through that. That's more wet floodproofing. But I would be more involved with, you know, larger public buildings, firehouses, police stations.
I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, but every case is a case-by-case basis where they're going to have to be evaluated by your staff regarding their flood impacts, how many times it's been flooded as far as history shows, things like that, for an individual assistant. I know you're PA guy, but the individual assistant side is going to have to be evaluated on a case-by-case basis.
Yes, it's a case-by-case, yes.
When has, or has there a decision been made for the IA assistance for actually raising properties? And what are the rules behind whose property gets raised? And how does the citizen that lives in that property go about inquiring or applying for that type of assistance?
Okay. Do you want me to talk?
Yes, you talk about that.
Okay. I've worked with HMGP and Hazard Mitigation Programs enough to be able to address a little bit of that. Of course, the HMGP funding...
Can you, can you explain what HMGP, because many people do not know the acronyms?
HMGP is Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. And after a disaster, there is a pool of money that's determined by the actual amount of disaster that's assistance that's paid out. So if it's $100,000, then 15% of that would be available to the state for hazard mitigation. So that's going to be decided when the totals start coming in. The state is the one that determines what that money is used for. So they can recommend that we feel we want to use our money, or the money that's coming from FEMA, for elevations. So that's why you'll see where they in the past have used mitigation funds for possibly elevations. Some areas in the past over the years have done what they call buyouts. And you might have heard that. I don't know how much they have done that here at all, but that's where they literally buy your property and then demolish it, and it's free space forever and ever. Nobody can ever build there again. Has to be maintained by the borough, or by the community, or by the county, whoever owns that, once they purchase from the homeowner. And the state can also do something new that they've started doing called demolition reconstruction, where they literally demolish a home and then decide on a certain amount of funding that can be used to actually bring in a new home or build a new home. But the state is actually one that makes the decision as to how any of the hazard mitigation funds are going to be used. Now, what North Carolina will do, of course, that's down the road a ways for them to decide, and the amount of money, like I said, will depend on what's actually paid out. The communities, the county, it's actually one that submits an application to the state, and then, say, New Bern may submit names to the county to say, "We would like to see 501 Main Street elevated." And then that process goes through where they do a full application, make decisions as to which properties possibly, if it's a property that's been repetitive loss, they've been flooded again and again, then they would probably be higher on the list. So, but citizens or homeowners would need to contact the office here and let them know that they're interested. That's the only way a homeowner can actually, the process, it has to go through this borough office to push to the county with a list of people that they would like to see be able to have something done or some mitigated properties.
That's basically, that's the 404 mitigation funds. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. The problem to many of the citizens that may be thinking about this is, is that 404 mitigation funds might not be released for 18 months down the road or better. You know, so I know some of the 404 mitigation money that was used in Craving County was actually probably close to 24 months. Don, is that right? After Matthew and same even with Irene? So it's not a fix for the homeowner, thinking that FEMA can use mitigation monies to raise their... mitigation monies to raise their house by us under construction?
Right. That's, that's...
Hello, I'm Brian Bulkin. I do individual assistance. So you're right, in terms of the individual assistance funding, the money's not typically used for the elevation purposes. However, there are other programs, both through their currently insured, with their flood insurance program, that there are options there that may allow them to elevate the home without having to tap into four of four resources. So that's one option under their current existing flood insurance plan, should they have one. The other option for them too, and probably rather let SBA speak to it, but should they get accepted for an SBA loan, there's the possibility that that could be built into the loan they receive from the SBA. So again, it all depends upon their eligibility. They'll necessarily have to wait for four of four funding. There are other avenues that they can, that they can take as well.
I have a question for you. The young lady said that this was in reference to a raising of the homes. What about through FEMA funding for mitigation for buyouts? Because I know I have a lot of residents over it in my ward that is really leaning towards a buyout. So what, what steps do they need to take for that? What steps do the city need to take to that?
Well, if, if they're interested in that type of mitigation, I would push that up to your guys here so that they can push up to the county, the county can get back to the state and say, you do have, of course, a mitigation person with the state. You wanna let him know, and I don't, I don't know who that is, but you wanna let them know that you have properties that you would be interested in doing the demolition, the buyout. The reason that they've fallen back from trying to do that is because this is especially tough on a small community. They ran into this in West Virginia. If you buy out all the homes, your tax base is gone, your people are gone. So that's one of the reasons they kind of have been trying to pull back from buying them out because that's, nobody can live there anymore, your tax base is gone. So, but if there's real interest in a, in a section, an area where continually flooded, possibly repetitive loss area, then I would definitely push up and let them know that you really have an inter, an interest in that particular part or, or office. And there again, the state has to make that decision, but...
Can you give me, I don't know if you have any information available right now, but four as a buyout with a homeowner, what market value is given to that homeowner? I mean, do you have any basic information about that?
They, they do an appraisal. They look at the tax assessment. Of course, we all know the tax assessment may not be at all close to what the market value is, but they do do appraisals of prior, look at hens in the area, same way you would be if you were selling them. That's how they determine those prices for, for buyouts.
Don, excuse me, Don, is Dot Henderson still the mitigation person for the state? Do you know? I know it's changed recently, I didn't know. And if so, maybe it would be a good idea if we could get the mitigation, the state, the IA mitigation person here to, or the buyout people here to, and, and have a meeting for anybody that's interested in that, meet with them.
And that's, that's what this meeting is about, is trying to determine and bring all these resources together. So Mr. Stevens, as we're hearing this, somebody would like to get on the list as far as raising the home, buy out of the home, whatever. Who is the person they would contact at the city? Because that is the question for our citizens. They want direction as far as who is, who is the contact? Where do they go? How do they at least start their process?
Sure, I'm, I'm happy to provide a contact. I'd be curious though what the controlling factors or issue, you know, and I know there's criteria that have to be met. And that's the problem is, we don't wanna be inundated with, I wanna be bought out, bought out, bought out, bought out, when they may have gotten, you know, a couple roofs knocked off, or a couple shingles knocked off the roof. There's criteria obviously that have to be met, but I'm happy to give a number for people to call if they've had significant, is it over fifty-one percent of damage or whatever it is? I mean, that's, that's what I'm...
I think it's multiple.
And well, that's, and that's another thing, when you...
There's a number of criteria. Typically, it's developed by identifying the, through a substantial damage estimate, they identify to the extent in which the home has been damaged, if it's over fifty percent. And then there's other additional criteria like, you know, repeated loss, repetitive loss and whatnot. I think it's important to understand though is that, you know, this is a process that is agreed upon at your all's level. So you, you make that decision, okay, these are the areas that we want to have taken into consideration for buyout. You all vote to that and the public has to agree, you know, normally has to come to some sort of referendum. And then as it goes forward, you submit that stuff up through the state. And then the state then makes a decision on which ones of those, in concurrence with FEMA, and what, and which of those properties that they will buy out. And so it's not a quick process. And, but, you know, in terms of when you wanna turn on that opportunity for the homeowners to come up and identify themselves, you can do that, but I think it's, you may want to lay the groundwork first on ensuring you have everything planning-wise in place of identifying the areas that have repetitive loss, the, the approximate homes that you're looking at for consideration in this, and then start reaching out and, or have them reach out to you and identifying, because a lot of people wish to have buyouts. However, it's not always a feasible process, in addition to the fact there's a cost share associated with the buyout as well, so.
Is that the same for raising a home as well? That process?
I'm sorry.
Is the process, he just spoke about as far as buyout, is it the same for someone who wants to raise their home to mitigate it by raising it?
If they're gonna use the HMGP for elevations, yeah, it's the same.
Same criteria?
You, and I'm, I'm not sure, do you have free board yet or you're just, do you have one?
No.
Two foot free board in town here. I know the state originally didn't have any when I checked, but, so that anybody that is below would be able to be part of that process to be in the application.
Okay, I wanna explain this, because again, it is so confusing. We have a lot of people watching and listening. So what, what you're basically saying is, if you live in a home that was below our flood level, which is nine feet?
Well, it varies from...
Or elevation. And you've had fifty-one percent damage, so more than fifty percent damage, you could potentially be eligible, not saying you are, but potentially eligible to seek FEMA funds to raise the house to the flood level, whatever it is. I just wanna make sure, and I, I, I like to stop and explain, you know, see the blonde? It takes me a while, okay? So I wanna make sure that we are thoroughly explaining it to our citizens because that's why they're here. It's a confu, I'm overwhelmed, I'm confused.
Oh, I totally...
And so I know, and these people have been taken out of their homes, they've been, you know, people in front of them, so it's important that we're very methodical, we're very, you know, we explain it as easy as possible because it's, it's a lot of information. I don't, I don't know how anybody can process this.
I want to note, do you have a question?
Do, do you folks have a guide that maybe has a flow chart, maybe has some steps on it that says if you are interested in your home being purchased, then you would have to meet this criteria? If you're interested in raising it, you would have to meet this criteria? Because I think there's a lot of questions in our city and we're sort of, everybody's pointing the fingers at other people and I think we all have the spirit that we wanna help each other, but somebody's gotta step up and say, this is what we've gotta do, this is the process that you follow. Because what Mr. Stevens said, I certainly appreciate, we don't want everybody in the city that has had enough of the, of hurricanes to call the city and say, we want our house purchased. Because we've gotta be a little bit realistic in how we follow that process. So do you have a quick sheet or cheat sheet or something that you could share with us?
Okay, the way it works is there is actually, HMGP has a mitigation grant program. There are people in an office who are currently working with the state HMGP people, HMGP people. They are putting together their plan on what they're gonna be doing. They will be holding public meetings where they will invite everybody to come and they will give them information about what the state's leaning toward, if you're interested in these programs. And at that time, they will bring all the information that you're asking, if it's out there, yes.
So, so it's safe to say that don't expect in the next thirty to sixty or ninety days for somebody from FEMA to come up with a checkbook and buy your house? Is that a fair statement?
No, that's not gonna happen. They're gonna do a public forum where they can have people come in to ask questions, to get information regarding buyouts or elevations or whatever programs the state is, is looking at.
So when a homeowner is looking, when they've had damage and they're looking for federal support and assistance, it's a long-term plan, it's not a short-term.
For HMGP, it most definitely is. Now, because I am the, NFIP National Flood Insurance Person, I wanna make sure that you're aware that the flood insurance policy does have what they call the increased cost of compliance. It's included in every NFIP insurance policy. Every flood policy has an additional thirty thousand dollars that may be used if you are over fifty percent substantially damaged and you're in a special flood hazard area. Those funds may be used for toward elevation or toward demolition if you decide you wanted to try to just tear it down and rebuild. You could use part of that money for demolition and part of that money toward elevation. So that's the other important part. And I know we do have a number, and I've got the numbers here, but I'm not gonna look for exactly how many flood insurance policies were here, how many were in the county. And I believe fifty-eight percent of claims in Craven County are completed. But if you have been found to be substantially damaged, and even if you feel you probably are, and maybe the guys haven't gotten out there yet to do, I couldn't tell, I think you might have said how many substantial damage were already determined. I think you're pretty well on on that process. If you don't have a letter and you're a homeowner and you wanna know if you're substantially damaged, they're gonna be the ones to tell you. And if you are, then that's when you can move forward to possibly use part of the funds that are included in everybody's flood insurance policy.
May I ask you a quick question? I have recommended to some folks that, number one, if you've had damage or not, you have November thirteenth to register.
Yes.
There's a cutoff.
Individual assistance.
And you could possibly...
For individual assistance.
You could possibly have damage and not know you have damage as far as foundations go.
For flood insurance, they're, they're, that deadline has not fallen to flood. You have up to a year to actually get your claim filed. They extended those because of the future, these huge disasters we had.
Is there someone here from SBA as well?
Yes, Karen.
Karen, hey. I, I know what might be helpful, if some of the residents that received quite a bit of damage and you had flood insurance, is to tap into that thirty thousand dollars that's there to bring your home into compliance through your flood insurance and then apply for SBA. It's my understanding, Karen, if, correct me if I'm wrong, that if you've received fifty-one percent damage to your home, you can apply through SBA to re, basically refinance a home and include funds for repairs at two percent. Is that correct, Karen?
Yes, sir. There's mitigation money of additional twenty percent of your disaster damage figure. Then there's the, the refinancing option, which a lot of people are starting to learn about and taking advantage of.
So, so if you have flood insurance and if you've also applied for FEMA, and FEMA's giving you, they, they're really quick about giving you some mitigation funds for tearing out ductwork, insulation, sheet rock, they want to stop the mold, you can collect that money and then in return, apply through SBA and either for a, a, a low interest, a two percent interest loan to repair your house or raise your house and it's rolled into the, the mortgage, or actually refinance your home at two percent through the SBA for thirty years. And you don't have, you've got a year before you have to start paying for it.
And just real quick to add to, not everyone qualifies for that.
Sure.
Because you have certain criteria that have to be met for someone to qualify for that program, is that correct?
But you don't know unless you apply.
And that's what, that's sort of kinda what goes back to the point of the, you know, individual case, case-by-case basis.
Correct. And, and so on top of the, some of the FEMA money, your thirty K through your flood insurance and SBA, and, and SBA, I have to say, is very quick to respond, so. But you have to file through FEMA before you can take any steps whatsoever, even with the SBA. Okay.
I want to bet you have a question.
This is a lot of information for our citizens to, to grasp right now. And I just want to know, the young lady with the HMGP program, the grant program, I've had a lot of, of my constituents that want to be included in a buyout. So with that HMGP grant program, do you have a ti, a timeframe we're looking at where all of this information is gonna be available on your website and even at your distribution center so people would know?
I would say you need to contact the state hazard mitigation person and push it forward.
Don, you're, Don's here, the guy that...
Okay, yeah, what, what, what type of timeframe are we looking at? I mean, is, you looking at?
Yeah, you gotta come to the mic.
Ninety days from now before you can even start this process?
I wanna, I just wanna clarify a few things real quick because I, I understand that's a huge concern for your constituents and for really a lot of people that are in the impacted area. So those who have flood insurance should tap into their flood insurance, okay? Their flood insurance is there to help repair their home and there is the increased cost of compliance that can help elevate their home as well. So there's no need for them to wait around for additional funding. Those who do not have insurance could be eligible for FEMA assistance, okay? And that assistance then is not, is not designed for them to elevate their home, however, right? So now we start talking about the possibility of elevation or buyout. All right, when we look at the world of buyout, it's very important to understand that the constituents who are identifying themselves as saying, I wish like, I would like for my home to be purchased, they need to go to their local counterpart. So that's you all in this case, okay? You all would compile that information and then you would submit it up. So in terms of the timeline at which anything comes available, and you have to remember that the money that it comes, that comes from or for the buyout of those homes comes from the state. It's granted through FEMA, but it's given to the state. It's not given, there's no, there's nobody that's gonna be, from FEMA that's gonna be handing that money directly. So it goes to the state and then it gets further placed down to the county and local government, okay? To then make the decisions on doing the purchase of the buyouts and pulling those homes, okay? So I just wanna make sure that that's understood.
So it's basically enough upon us, the timeframe, we get these individuals' names to the county and then in essence...
It's not gonna be just their names. You guys have to come to, you guys have to come to a vote, you have to agree on the, on the areas that you wish to have bought out, okay? And those may or may not include those residents who are interested in the buyout process. Those then get submitted up, decisions get made at the state level with FEMA, and then from there, that comes back down with the, what's been agreed upon and the amount of funding that's gonna be allotted to buy out those homes. So the process can take some time. And when I say some time, it can extend on for a period of, you know...
I'll rehearse, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I've got something to say. I'm so sorry because I'm just gonna be real honest, a lot of this stuff is confusing, not necessarily for me, but for our constituents. And I feel like this workshop, based on the, what we got here is, I think we're going a little left field. I feel like this in itself, we need to probably sit down and get this documented so that it can go on social media because people are watching this. And I'm already gotten people talking about they want their house bought out and that's gonna cause a lot of confusion. I feel like we need to better get this information out so that people understand. So if there's a way that we can get it documented or maybe have a special meeting in regards to exactly what you're saying just on the FEMA, because it's, it's a lot right now.
I would agree.
A lot of people are confused, they're popping up.
Yeah, I, I would, I completely agree with you. I think having a separate meeting with some mitigation specialists coming down to sit down with you all to explain the process, to help you follow through and understand that the, the whole process in terms of doing buyouts or elevations would be very beneficial. And then that will help then distribute, you know, help put the information out to the public better.
Okay, so that brings me back to Mr. Stevens. One of the recommendations or what we talked about in here is potentially bringing a con... we talked about in here is potentially bringing a consultant in to do an assessment. And from that assessment, then having public meetings, and that would be our go-to, the mayor called it our flood czar, I guess, having someone like that that would be able to do these assessments, have public meetings, get public inputs, and then define a strategic plan or a process for immediate steps and then steps in the future to protect our community from this happening again, which I hope we're all dead by the time it happens again. In 100 years, I'm saying 100 years, sorry. That's what I meant, 100 years.
Mr. Mayor, I got a question too, if you don't mind.
All right, go ahead.
Could I, sorry.
Well, we'll be with Jesus anyways.
In this, one of the things I want everyone to understand, and it's my understanding as well, that this mitigation money, when it's opened, it's not open just to Craven County. It's open to the entire state of North Carolina, even areas that were not affected by this hurricane. And Jeff or, and Don, you're the one, I'm not sure who could answer this question, but during Irene, how many properties in Craven, in Craven County were brought out by FEMA? Do you have any idea off the top of your head?
I think the process was six.
Six?
So bring the cities and town areas.
And how many were raised? Do you know?
I think it was close to, it was close to 100, I think, around 100 or so raised.
Raised?
Oh, raised, I mean, were raised, none of them, it's a table.
Okay. So that's how slow the process is. I mean, it's, it's not a, it's, it's not some, if, someone probably needs to fix their home and try to have and live, get back in it before they even think about this, this buyout.
Well, the, well, the next question I have, and I don't know who to address this to, but I, we're now seeing in the citizens of New Bern that was affected and cannot live in their homes. We're now hearing that. This is gonna be a long process. So what about this, the next step is for those individuals that cannot go back into their homes, what about FEMA? What timeframe are we looking at for FEMA to bring in some temporary shelter homes for, for these residents?
Could I just, pardon me, could I, I just add one, one aspect that's being overlooked?
Okay.
Not to interrupt you, but these areas that were flooded or passed, they're, they're, they could be high-risk areas. I'm saying there has, what's most important is public safety, life safety, that, that these areas, whether they're safe or not, so that, so that an engineering analysis might be necessary, whether these are actually livable places. So it's not just necessarily just a choice, do I want to live there? Do I want to sell? Do I want to do this or not? And anytime in the HMG, the hazard mitigation grant level, there are engineers there. They're looking more at the, at the city, not just particular houses, but the very neighborhood, the area, the, the zone, the flood zone or whatever like that. So I just want to say that that's, that's another factor why time is, is taken. So if you have city engineers, city architects or something, it, that, that's also a factor that's important. The flood leaves, changes the soil, the whole estuaries, the whole coast, everything coming, surging up the rivers, through the estuaries, all, all that comes into play. I don't mean to make it complicated, but I'm just saying that as an architect myself, life safety of your community is foremost and not something to be neglected.
Alderman Bingle, you have a question?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alderman Bingle, you have another question?
Yeah, well, he, he's gonna respond. I was waiting for an answer for that.
No, it, it, so I'll just let him finish. Okay, so next steps. Thank you for asking that question, because I think that's a very important piece of where we're going, because I think everybody's starting to understand that this could be a lengthy process. So obviously, the first step is gonna be having the individuals register who had damage to their homes. So it's utmost. Everybody needs to get out and register, whether they're doing it at a DRC, calling into the 1-800-621-3362 number.
Say that again.
1-800-621-3362, or FEMA. So they can dial into that, or they can go to FEMA.gov, I believe, right, is the correct address. And they go and they can register online as well. So I strongly recommend that anybody who has had damage or believes they've had damage, to go ahead and, and do that process, get registered. And even if they have insurance, because I know there's a lot of discussion back and forth, well, I got insurance, I was told I'm not gonna be eligible. Well, insurance doesn't always cover everything. So go ahead, it's fine, apply, it's not gonna hurt anything. And at least during the system before the registration period closes, so that if there is something that FEMA can help you with, you're already there. So now it's just a matter of applying and submitting your paperwork, right? So that's the first step. Let's get everybody to apply that needs to apply.
What's the deadline to getting the number?
Oh, what's the, the 13th?
November 13th, yes.
Yeah, November 13th is currently the deadline. Okay, so what do we do in between then? All right? So in between then, as, as individuals are trying to recover, there's still a lot of options on the table. So there is TSA that's been approved for Craven County. So that's important to understand. That is transitional sheltering assistance. That's where you can go to the hotels if need be and stay there until you can either return to your home or repair an apartment complex. There's also the, how the rental assistance that's being provided to individuals. Typically, it comes in the form of your first two months of fair market rents, according to HUD. So they'll get a lump sum of about two months' worth of rent. That'll cover their deposit and their first month. Now, if they have a continued need, they can, there's paperwork that they can fill out. And all they have to identify is what were my pre-disaster costs versus my post-disaster costs. And from that, they can apply for what's called continued rental assistance. Okay? So they can continue receiving that to stay in a, in a rental unit or wherever they may be. All right? And then there's the direct housing, we call it, which are the, the MHUs, the manufactured housing units, and also the travel trailers or RVs, as they're known. So this list is gonna be identified based upon an individual's level of damage and criteria that has been established through FEMA, all right, to identify to the, you know, we're looking at our priority list. So who, who's out of their home, who's lost their whole home, who's got destroyed or, you know, over a set amount of damage to their property. We're gonna reach out to those individuals and we're gonna call them. And we're gonna say, hello, you know, have you, have you found a place to live yet? Is your, your home still not livable? Where are you at? How are you staying? And then the next questions are gonna lead into whether or not they're gonna be eligible to have or occupy one of these units. Okay? Teams already been out in the field to identify the viability for the private sites and commercial parks. So we've already been out there looking. And as individuals get identified, we will go to their home. We will look at their property and see if an RV will fit on their property or if a manufactured housing unit will fit. And some will, and they may be eligible, but others may not. And those that, whose private sites, as we call them, their, their property, cannot suit a, an RV or a manufactured housing unit, will be referred to a commercial park.
At this time-
Just wanna, I just wanna mention one thing, because some confusion, I've, I've seen it online too, is there was somebody who thought that Craven County didn't, is not getting any of these trailers or manufactured houses because the TV showed them in Kinston. And the reason they're in Kinston is because they were housed at the Global Trans Park. That is the staging area-
Yes.
-for all FEMA-related items and storm-related items. So to those of you that are watching right now, we didn't say no. We're, we're waiting for FEMA. They're just being staged in Kinston. And you will determine where they go here, not the city, not the county. It's FEMA. We'll make that determination, who gets one of these-
Correct.
...temporary homes. Okay. Just want to make that very clear.
I'd like to, at this time, if it's okay with the board, that Mr. McDaniels come up and Nelson, if you would, come up and see if this is what, where, where you wanted to go with this and what else we could do to assist the public. I'm sure this won't be the last workshop we'll have. We're gonna continue to keep working like we are today. Mr. McDaniels?
Well, I, I think this has been very helpful, and I'm grateful to the aldermen for this session. And I agree with all the people who have said this should be the first of many. Our concern as a group, and we're an informal group, that our concern has been that as people's frustrations and anger and concerns become greater, that we not become divided, that we react as a community, that we call on our community leaders to, to help create the roadmap that allows individuals to, to do their parts. I know that much of this will fall on individual homeowners and will fall on, on, on people across the community. But our concern has been that we do it in a coordinated and well-guided fashion. So from my point of view, and I, I, I say, we're a very, we're a very loose group. We don't have a formal leader, and everybody has an equal voice. But since you've asked me to say, I would say the one question that, that can, in my mind, that continues to be an important question that hasn't been answered, I am assuming that both the city and the county governments were operating at pretty much full capacity prior to this disaster. If not, you overstaffed and, and you had staff equal to the, equal to the task before the disaster. And from what I've heard here today, as each of these experts has talked and, and, and the more I've read about it, a tremendous, there'll be a tremendous amount of additional burden that's put on county and city staff. So my question is really, within that first question that we asked, are, are we gonna need to hire staff who can full-time address these questions? Or do we feel that the current staff, and I know you can't answer the county, but we're gonna ask the same question to the county, does the current staff have the excess capacity to be able to deal with these very complex questions that need answers so that individual citizens can, can make the appropriate decisions? And I, I haven't, maybe I've missed something, but I haven't heard an answer yet to that question. Who, who will be the go-to to be, and I don't mean going around for an apartment, the department, who will be the flood czar or the storms czar?
Let me, let me kinda answer this a little bit stumble doing it. Generally speaking, and Nelson, don't go anywhere, we, we, you might have a question too after we answer this. Generally speaking, when we procedurally are running the city, the city manager normally will come to the board, either at a meeting, in a budget amendment change, or at, at the budget sessions or in an event, you know, and will recommend staff changes. And then from there, the board will make policy and, and the city manager will execute that. Here, again, this is part of the process is, and I know Alderman Bingle, you have some concerns about that. We've talked about it. So I think I'll just start the, the answer to your question with Alderman Bingle. I don't mean being put you on the spot. We have talked about the fact that, you know, the most important thing here, 18 months down the road is too late for this board to expedite things for the public. They need it done now. I understand that. So I'm gonna let Alderman Bingle kinda answer that and, and we'll, we'll add to it, because we've talked about it.
What my concern is, is that I want there to be someone that when they call, they don't have to make five phone calls. They can talk to somebody that can direct them to the building inspector, to, you know, maybe Jordan Hughes, because that has something to do with stormwater or, I'm not stormwater, but, you know, sewer and, and to our stormwater department. We talked about that, I talked with that, to the mayor. That was my biggest concern, in addition to having a consultant. I still think we need to have a consultant come in to make assessments and figure out where we're at and where we need to go to so that that process can involve the citizens and hearing what their needs. And then a formal strategic plan can be put in place. I don't want to just hire somebody, you know, be a consultant, make a plan without any input from the citizens. I think it's important, what I've read from your questions, is the citizens want input. I think it's important that they have it. But in the meantime, you know, I would like somebody, maybe even in a temporary space, you know, to be that person that kinda, you know, hugs everybody in the sense, and don't, don't get me wrong, but everybody needs a friendly voice when they call. This is very stressful. I need somebody to say, hi, how can I help you? They may not have the answer. They said, let me, let me see what I can find out from inspections. Let me see what I can find out from something. Or this is not a city question. You need to call Don Bumgardner in the county and he can help you. Or we need to, the state. I just, that was my concern today, in, in that we have somebody like that at the helm.
Alderman Bingle, go ahead.
My only concern is that while we have the resources and the individuals that are here for us to somewhat create a standard operating procedure in regard to a chain of command with questions, I don't think it's necessary that if we're going to hire a consultant to do what Alderman Bobby Astor said was the most important part, to have another consultant that is gonna be here to answer calls. I feel like we need to utilize the resources, employees that we do have here, because we, I mean, to go out and get a consultant for everything, are we using our money the best way at this point in time during everything that we have going on with damages and things like that? You know, if we have, if they're fielding questions to us and I'm able to give it to Mark and he knows who to give it to, that's alleviating spending money on a consultant, because I feel like our money really needs to go to the one consultant that is gonna sit here and do those hours of work with the PA and the, what was the other definition?
And the what?
The IA.
The W.
Yeah, those, those are work, because we want to make sure that we're submitting it correctly and getting our money back. That would be my only-
Yeah, Alderman Bingle.
Well, I, I concur with what Alderman Bingle has stated, that we do need a contact person that, that our citizens can reach out for, for help. But I also too think, at this point, we've already heard that it's gonna be a lengthy process before any FEMA grant money coming through the state or with the help of the local government. But my main concern right now is that I want to see some temporary manufactured homes coming in here and some travel trailers coming in for those individuals that cannot go back into their home, that don't have the money to repair their homes. That's what I'm, I'm wanting to see right now.
Alderman Bingle, ask it.
Yeah, I, I would say that after Hurricane came, Irene and then Matthew, all of the department heads were extremely busy doing what we call the project worksheets for FEMA. And it went on for years. And I think now that we have hired a consultant to take care of that workload, that's, you know, don't get me wrong, the department head still will have to provide them with some information, but the writing of the PWs now will be handled by our consultant. That should leave our department heads available to help our citizens is what we pay them to do.
Right.
So my question is, maybe to some of the, well, to the city manager, I don't know, are they overwhelmed at this point in time, Mr. Stevens, where you think that, but you know, and I'll say it too, is one of the most important things that you can do is when a citizen calls, we, we need, we treat them, I've always treated them and taught my fire department staff to, to treat them as customers.
That's right.
And if you don't have a customer, you can't have a business. So the most important thing that we need to do is return our phone calls. Because if nothing makes me any madder than some, me calling someone, they don't return my phone call. So, you know, if our staff might not have the information, they may have to research it and even consult with our partners with Craven County or on the state level. And then I would hope within 24 to 48 hours, in most cases, they should be able to make a return phone call. And now I'll ask you the question. Are they overwhelmed at this point? Do you think that we need a person to, to run interference?
I want to clarify something. Before you answer that question, Mr. Stevens, I just want to clarify something. I'm thinking more about when the citizen calls, again, going back to customer service, they don't know that their call should be directed to building inspections. They don't know that their call should be directed, you know, to HPC, to more, they just don't know. They're, they're trying to get answers. So where do they call? That's what I'm thinking. Is there that one person that could call that's saying, hi, thank you so much for calling today. Yes, this sounds like a building inspections call. I'm gonna, I'm gonna get you to the building inspector, or I'm gonna get the building inspector to call you. That's what I'm just saying. I don't know, and that's what I'm thinking.
I mean, we represent them. I feel, I mean, if, if someone has an issue, call your representation, which would be your alderman. That's what we were elected for. And we go ahead and either document it in an email and send it to the city manager, and he's able to-
I'm not trying to spend money. I just want to provide service.
-pass it out to where it needs to go, or if we know directly where it needs to go, then we forward that and then we allow the department heads or the employees to do it. But I don't feel like we need to, you know, hire someone and do a call center just to make sure-
Well, we currently have a switchboard operator.
Why, I was just gonna say, we have.
That's right. So I mean, what, this, maybe you drive-
And if, and if she doesn't know, Brenda was certainly-
Listen, Mr., listen, Mr. Stevens, answer that question at this time. Go ahead, sir.
First off, I'd like to talk to my staff to find out where they are and, and how they're doing. From what it appears, quite a few of them have returned to their normal operating duties, but I'm sure there are others who are burdened a little more so than some. Secondly, what I would say is, is if we're going to go that route, I would recommend that we set up a phone number that is specific to disaster recovery. set up a phone number that is specific to disaster recovery, you know, question, building recovery, flood mitigation recovery, whatever it may be. And I just want to point out, I mean, and this is, this is no slight to the FEMA folks, but Ms. Figaro brought like eight or 10 people here who are experts in their field, to think that we're going to have one person answer all the questions and calls that come in is going to be virtually impossible. Because it is a very robust, very cumbersome situation, individually, case by case. What I would say is, for every single person who has had any kind of damage whatsoever, they need to call the 1-800-individual assistance number that that guy gave out, that is, what, 1-800-
621-3362.
621 FEMA. 1-800-621-FEMA. You need to start that process.
Right.
They can help guide you and maneuver you through the process of the federal government as far as individual assistance.
I agree.
What we can help facilitate is anything that we have and manage and control at our end, and I'm happy to try to set that up internally, but ultimately, a lot of our responses will be, have you contacted the 1-800-FEMA number? And if they have not, that's probably going to be our first step. And then secondly, once we get there, it's going to be, have you contacted your insurance company? Everybody has a different insurance, you may or may not have flood insurance, you may not have, you know, wind and hail insurance, I mean, there are so many variables out there, that to have one person being able to manage and know all that information would be impossible.
I agree.
And so what I would do is, we can, we can have that number set up, and, or utilize the number that we currently have now, try to have an individual that could potentially answer those questions, or direct people to the place that they need to go. And more than likely, it's probably going to be to the individual assistance FEMA number.
Okay, Mr. McDaniels, would you like to ask questions off of all that?
And I thought that it, we just got a partial answer, because it went in sort of the direction of customer service, and that's certainly part of it, and we need good customer service. But the question to me is also, as these experts spoke today, they said, "This is going to need to come from the city, this is going to need to come from the county, this is, the process goes up, the process comes back down, and there's some back and forth." And so my question, capacity question, is not only having to do with customer service, but do we have people in place now, who are going to be able to expeditiously follow that process, and make sure that we, as a city and as a county, are at the window, when the window opens, to get the help? Because if other counties and cities are, and we are not, then they're going to get the help. So the question is not only customer service, it's also, again, do we have the capacity, I'm not faulting any city workers, but we've been in the relief stage, the recovery stage is very different. It is long, it's complex, and so my question really, and I think our question, and I don't, well, I am speaking for the whole group, I guess, without authorization, but my question is not only a customer service question, but do we have the capacity to be at the door of all those agencies, state, federal, that can help us, supplying as quickly as possible all the information they need, so that the process can be expedited, and so that when the window opens, you know, we're the first ones standing at the window, because we know that we've got people across, across the city and across the county, who have very, very different needs, different incomes, different profiles, different needs, but they all need to know that the county and the city are doing everything possible to make sure that our citizens are first in line, or at least near the front of the line, when it comes to answering those questions, and working with the process that we've just heard about, which requires county, state, federal, back down, back up. I can't imagine that that isn't a very daunting task to be added to people's current jobs.
Nelson, let me, we have, we have successfully completed that task on several hurricanes prior to this one. What will happen is, the state, the state will actually notify the county, when the county is, when this mitigation money is available. And then Don's office usually will contact Jeff Grigieri's office, and by that time, we will have the properties that receive the heaviest damage. And we pass those names and addresses up through the county, and then the county submits them. So we've been very successful in the past in getting our little share of mitigation money, because, I don't know, how many FEMA lots do we have in the city now? Probably 15 or 20, maybe? Maybe somewhere out in the neighborhood?
At least.
That were bought-out homes through Irene and Matthew, and so, and beyond.
And Bobby, I agree, and no one is faulting what's been done in the past, or faulting what's been done right now, but I was told, and maybe this is incorrect, but our committee was told this past week by one of the top officials, and I guess, go ahead, is that, I want to make sure I pronounce that correctly, but anyway, that after Matthew, for example, in Craven County, there were approximately 600 FEMA applications, and to date last week, from this storm, there were over 9,000. So it would appear, and I was here for, I'm old, I'm older than Dana, a lot older than Dana is, I was here for Ione. I lived in a house that flooded in Ione. This storm, this storm surge, in my judgment, was much, much, much worse than Ione, the worst storm surge in our city's history. And so I would just suggest that we're at a whole different level of need, and I don't have the answer, I'm just asking the question, this isn't like Matthew, it's not like any of the storms in the last 30 to 40 years, it's a much larger event, and do we have the capacity, do people who already have full-time jobs have the capacity to be doing all the things that the city and the county need to do in order to get the help that we, and the answers that we need?
Nelson, if you could enumerate right down some of your group, we're going to be going to a regular meeting in a little bit, what questions we've not answered, or you want a little more, more full answer on? And possibly, when we get to new business part of our meeting, we can talk some more, and maybe make policy or direction for the manager. The other thing, if you have an ad hoc of three or four folks, yourself included, when we are doing things, as far as meeting with FEMA or whatever, we'll try to keep you in the loop, it might be a good idea just to go to Development Services and sit down and procedurally go through how some things are being handled. We'll continue to keep the door open for communication, and to improve on the process. So if you could maybe do that for us, Mr. Alderman, do you have a question?
Yes, sir, I was just going to make a comment, and I think Alderman Bingle brought it up, that I think we received these questions today. So the city manager, I think, did a pretty good job at trying to provide some answers, and I'm assuming, Mark, you can share this with the group.
I'll be happy to share with them. Like I said, I only got through about five out of the 25 questions that I got. I mean, I've got all of it here, and I'm more than happy to share.
My recommendation, Mayor, would be for Mr. Manager to share this with the group, let them have time to digest it, and then if they have questions, bring those back to us. But also, I think it's very important that what we need to figure out in this process is to delineate the responsibilities of the city and the county versus the federal agreements, because I think there's some misconception, at least some folks that I've heard, that the city's supposed to be doing certain things that's not our responsibility. And again, in the spirit of helpfulness, we want to be able to provide that direction and the resource of the folks that need that, but actually, the responsibility is actually going to fall on someone else's shoulders. So I think it's important for us, for, in the background, if you will, to get all that information together, and then come out and say, "This is the process, this is how it's going to be managed going forward." I think it would be helpful for everyone.
And I would certainly agree, and we were aware that, that when we were asked to prepare this list of questions, there, we had to make sure that we were polling the people in the group, so that it wasn't this one person's question. So I know you've had a short time to respond, and we're not expecting instant answers, we're trying to go on record as saying that we will support, in every way possible, the people who are taking this seriously enough, and I know we all are, but to try to address the problems at the level where they are. There's some people in our group who know so much, I've been so impressed, we pulled together this little group, we've got some smart people who are asking good questions, questions that I don't understand, but I know they must be good, because I don't understand them. So, at any rate, a number of the people are here, and they've been very serious about saying, "We don't, we're not after anyone's scalp, we are trying to be supportive, and make sure that we're communicating with citizens so that frustration doesn't turn to anger." And I'll just, editorial comment, but after the, well, I guess they've all been, but after the great fire, which was a great disaster, wasn't a natural disaster, but it was a disaster, some decisions were made at City Hall, not at this room, because this was all at City Hall at that time, but some decisions were made that exacerbated racial tensions, we still suffer from that today. We want to be part of making decisions that pull people together, and build bridges, and find our commonalities, and it's that spirit that we are trying to work in, not one of dividing or accusing, but supporting, and recognizing that while we all come from different situations, and as Mark has said, it is individual, but we all are part of a community. And that's the spirit of what we've tried to do. And so, I don't know, if the people who have been to any of the group meetings, if you stand up, you can, you can be guilty as charged. And we have another, probably 10 people who couldn't be here today, who've been to the meet, but the meetings are open, there, we're not, there's nothing behind closed doors, we love for people to just come and discuss it.
Okay. Is there anything else come for the workshop?
No, I'm very thankful for the involvement of the citizens.
Anything else come for the workshop at this time?
Motion adjourned.
Second. Motion second to adjourn. On favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same.